Less than two hours.
Craig, is everybody in?
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors meeting for March the 9th. Please all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation. Indivisible. And just as for all.
Everyone, please be aware that the supervisory meeting is being video recorded. Carol, could you make a note that we had an executive session earlier on a personnel matter? Thank you. First up is the receipt of the minutes for February 9th. Are there any questions for the supervisors or corrections? I'll take that as a no. Can I have a motion?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Second up is a receipt of inverse history for January 2021. Can, are there any questions?
No.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Some.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next up is the receipt of unaudited year-to-date budget report for December 2020. Craig, do we have one of the auditors in the meeting here today or no?
At the auditors, we have Chuck Wilson on.
Okay, Chuck. Can you speak to the audit?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Chuck.
Sure. Yeah, that's report for the unaudited numbers as of in the year that has almost all, it has all the adjustments and at this point other, other than depreciation. We closed the books on February 16th for 2020. The auditors were in the last week of February and the first week of March. They completed their field work. Finalizing just a few open items at this point. As you see in my report there, revenues exceeded expenditures by about a half million dollars. Expenditures there include the million dollars in reserves that you approved in December. So in reality, the excess of revenues over expenses about 1.5 million for the year. And as you can see in the report there, there's rather significant variances in, in real estate transfer taxes or income taxes. And the, and the business taxes. We had one large payment from a taxpayer related to the sale, the bonus, bonus related to the sale of a business, which was about $300,000 just for that transaction. And there were a couple other ones similar to that in, in the range of $30,000. Also, at the end of 2019, we, we sent over several years worth of UNO permits to Burkhymmer to have them research. As a result of that, we picked up about 31 new businesses, which they said who we received that year's taxes and the two prior years for those businesses and that amounted to about $285,000. So that's, that's part of the, 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 the bump there as well. As you can see, the expenditures overall were, were significantly less than anticipated. Spending was kept to a minimum because of the COVID situation and things like some conferences and things like that didn't take place, which resulted in lower expenses as well. Um, so we, we expect to file the DCD, the DCD financial statements on April 1st. The, the big booklet that you get and the auditor presents, which is like 30, 40 pages, with the full Gatsby statements that'll be available probably in the June timeframe. That takes a while to produce. And the pension disclosures, we usually don't get until the, the mid-April time, timeframe.
Okay, that, that was actually one of my questions, Chuck. I wanted to know when Barbara King Thornton was going to come in with their 40-page document. You just answered it in June. So in, in general, I'm hearing revenue is up, expenses are down. The township's in very good financial shape. Is that, is that a good summary?
That's a good summary.
Okay, well, keep up the good work. I, I like to see numbers like that. We're very fortunate in Lower Gwinnett. A lot of area municipalities weren't as fortunate as we are. So I think we're, I'm just grateful I live in a township that's got residents that are, that are in good financial condition and they pay their taxes and our, our staff keeps the roads and the trash and everything all cleaned up and orderly. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from the supervisors?
No.
Are there any questions for the members of the public on our audit report?
I'm not seeing anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so can I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, building and zoning, something that will get a little bit of attention here. We have a resolution 2021-6, extension of outdoor dining. Craig, could you fill us in?
Um, yes, over the past year, we have allowed for outdoor dining due to the COVID pandemic. Our latest outside dining resolution expired last night at midnight. So we're looking to extend this another 90 days from, from tonight to allow the restaurants to continue their outdoor dining to help them out with the reduction in the amount of people that they can have in their restaurants.
Craig, I know the governor has made a number of pronouncements lately. Do, do you have any information on when the the governor plans to lift the restrictions on dining at all or no?
Totally. I don't, I don't know totally. There, it's going up as, as far as percentage-wise, but you still need the, the social distancing as well. So.
Yeah, okay.
As I said, can I ask a question? Danielle, with your position, have you heard any difference?
Have not.
You have not?
Okay.
Are there any supervisors with any questions on this resolution?
So do we, and I'm, I'm sure this is following in what you were just asking, but do we have any anticipation that this is going to change in the next three months?
The. We can always be helpful.
I'm hoping, yeah, right back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. And I think this, I think the language says it expires upon the lifting of the emergency order or the ban. Does it? I'm assuming it does.
Hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay. Um. Are there any members of the public that have any questions on this resolution?
I don't see anything, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh, next up is Resolution 2021-07, intermunicipal collaboration resolution to extend the IGA for the development of the water quality improvement plan for the Wizard Hicken Creek watershed. All right, that's a big resolution here. I've got some insight onto this, but I know Jamie, you've got with the, with Drew at the county. And I'm sure you, you had several conversations. Would you like to talk about this briefly?
Yeah, this is just, um, like as everybody knows, we're part of this intergovernmental agreement where we're working with the other municipalities in the Wizard Hicken watershed to draft a water, water quality improvement plan. That original draft has been submitted to the regulatory agencies and they've come back with some comments and just things they'd like us to address, which we're in the process of working on. And so in order to continue to operate in the fashion that we've been doing, we need to extend the intergovernmental agreement for a period of, I think this one is going to take us to December 31st, 2022, or the approval of the plan, whichever one is first.
Right, just, just so everybody knows what this is about. I mean, there's a lot of words here. The EPA and the DEP have come to the municipalities along the Wizard Hicken Creek and they told the municipalities that the creek is, is impaired. And they have several metrics that they use to just to justify their, their position, right? So the municipalities all got together and formed an intergovernmental agreement about, I would say, four years ago. Along with a grant from the William Penn Foundation of about a million dollars and right now we're municipalities have contributed, I would say about three quarters of a million dollars in round numbers roughly to this organization. So Temple could study it. And we hired an engineering firm to study it. And we come up with recommendations based on EPA and DEP guidelines. We've submitted a couple of draft reports to them. A couple of weeks ago, we met with the EPA, the Executive Committee. I'm the co-chair along with Paul Leonard from Upper Dublin Township. And we discussed where we were with our report and updated report. We're going to release a new update based on their comments, hopefully within the month, but we'll, we'll see how that goes. And the whole idea is to draft a, an approach so that we can satisfy the EPA and DEP requirements that are needed to clean the stream based on the studies we've done. So that we, the, the 13 townships for wastewater treatment plants can design a project management solution that will address the concerns of the regulators. Now, the whole idea behind all of this is to address, make, make a custom engineering solution. Otherwise, we get what's called a TMDL, total maximum daily load. More or less a boilerplate of requirements that come from EPA for which you must comply. And it's, it's a one-size-fits-all type of approach. So with all of the, all of the municipalities and the wastewater treatment plants involved, we're, we're hoping that they'll accept our plan and that we can manage this ourselves. Now, we have the county involved. We have a number of NGOs. Wizard Hicken Trails is involved. There's, there's a number of organizations. If everybody's present at our meetings, you get about 45 people or so show up. So this is, this is a big effort. This is going to be a very expensive effort. It's approximately a 30-year effort. And when you add up all the municipalities and the wastewater treatment plants, the total bill for this over, over the 30 years, we, we need the, the reduced bill for all of this over the 30 years could easily exceed, exceed a billion dollars. That is the cheap solution. When I say cheap, that's our custom solution. So it could be, you gotta, you gotta think in terms of that number, as staggering it as it is. If the EPA comes back and tells us that we need to make further recommendations or they don't like our solutions, the Ambler wastewater treatment plant, for example, may have to be completely rebuilt. And a treatment plant estimate from several years ago that our engineer provided would start at 60 million. So the amount of money we're talking about here is staggering. So the goal here is to get to a factual, scientific-based solution. And then the municipalities will be executing that based on the agreements that we have. For example, the IGA that's, we're moving forward to make this happen. It's a very long-range, expensive approach, but it's a customizable approach and we're very optimistic that the regulators will accept it. That's, that's the, the Cliff Note version, but it's, it's a big deal. It's coming. And we're hoping they'll accept our solution. But we'll have to, we'll have to wait and see. So I'd like, are there any questions from supervisors?
I don't have any questions, but I'd like to make a comment and, and that is as I'm aware, this is an EPA unfunded mandate, a DEP unfunded mandate. And I think the public has to make that known, that they're telling us what to do, federal government, state government. They're not supporting the municipalities that are addressing problems that they feel exist or supporting us with any grants or anything at all, matching funds, to my knowledge, unless that has changed, Mark. You being on the committee, you're probably aware of that, but I think the committee has to make, if that's the case, they still haven't, we have to make some noise from that committee and all the municipalities to get some matching funds from federal government and state government for this humongous project of cleaning up the waters and the treatment plants that are in existence. So that's, that's all my comments.
Well, it, it is an unfunded mandate. I'm just hoping to manage that process as best we can. And yes, we have subcommittees that are part of the IGA that are looking into various funding opportunities, grants, that kind of thing to help minimize the overall impact to the taxpayers in the Wizard Hicken Valley. So we've had some success. The Wizard Hicken Trails just completed the project at the headwaters. They spent just under $2 million and they did a fantastic job in Upper Gwinnett with the string. And it's actually right behind the Upper Gwinnett Township building. There's a trail back there if anybody ever wants to go back and take a look at it. They did a fantastic job and Wizard Hicken Trails and Upper Gwinnett Township did that. But these are the types of projects that we're, we're going to have to do. And we have, you know, two major groups and point source pollution and non-source point pollution, two different buckets. And we need to, we have to address both of those in our plan. And we're, we're trying to do that. We have a lot of smart people working for several years now and we're, we're optimistic, but you're right. It's, it is an unfunded mandate. Right now, we're just trying to get to a point where we have a plan that will work and we can figure out some of this funding. So that's the direction it's going. Are there any other comments? Yes, Tessie?
Um, so is there a, a place where the public can see what the plan is or is it still in draft?
It's still in draft and EPA and DEP, DEP is more involved on the ground. But they're, they're representing both EPA and DEP and EPA is involved. They come to the meetings. And we're, we're trying to get to a place where we can negotiate agreements in understandings because the language is very important. It's scientific language to make sure everybody understands exactly what the obligations are, exactly what the measurements are, how we're going to be judged with them, how, how the metrics going to be adjudicated, if you will. It's administrative procedure, but it's, it's very technical, very involved. And our, our various reports that we have go on for hundreds of pages. So it's, it's still in draft form and we're getting, we're getting close. We hope we're getting, getting close. And we're taking the recommendations that come out of their meetings and figuring out how we can adjust our plan and provide agreement on what everything means. And as you know, Tessie, getting, you know, getting to the solution as technical solution on chemistry, and a lot of this is chemistry, is, is, is very challenging. Getting the terms defined and the measurements defined and the health measurements agreed to. And who's going to do it and how's that getting paid for? All these details are, you know, they're, they're very, very specific and they're, and very, very important to get nailed down. The treatment plants, most people don't know, but the treatment plants, each one of them costs millions of dollars a year to run. They're very expensive and we don't, we don't take this lightly. So, but anyway, we're, we're getting close, but we, it's still all in draft. So we can't, you know, it's in front of the regulators. So we, we can't, we, we can't publicize that yet. Hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Um, are there any questions for the public?
I am not seeing anything, Mr. Chairman.
I, I raise my hand if that's the proper way to.
Yeah, it is. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Hi, so Mark Schaefer, 23 Brookline Court. Just want to say, well, I'm a board member at Wizard Hicken Trails and in charge of the Water Resources Committee there. And I want to applaud the efforts of Lower Gwinnett and certainly Mark Gray, who's been spearheading this and organizing it. And sometimes it is like herding cats. And I just want to say we appreciate the efforts put forth on this project. It is a big project. And yes, it is unfunded, but there are also secondary benefits. So things that will mitigate this issue will also mitigate things like flooding, flooding in Ambler and, which is a perennial problem. So there are, you know, other benefits that come from it that aren't quite explicitly stated. It, it is unfunded, but this, this creek is 20% of the water supply for the city of Philadelphia. So there are benefits to be accrued. And again, I just wanted to say thank you for the efforts put forth by all parties and I would be in support of this resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Schaefer. Yeah, we, I didn't go into a lot of detail, but yeah, it's the, most, most people don't know this, but a lot of the drinking water that Philadelphia gets is directly from the creek. And that drinking water, a lot of it, especially during the summers, actually comes from the wastewater treatment plants. So the treatment plants have got to clean that water to a very high level before we can put it back into the creek. Of course, it gets treated when it's in Philadelphia again. But it has to be pretty, very, very clean when it's coming out of the wastewater treatment plant. So most people have never toured or probably haven't asked for a tour of a treatment plant, but it is a very technical operation. And so there's, there's a lot that goes in. There's a lot of YouTube videos out there. If anybody's interested in seeing how a treatment plant works. And I've also had a tour of the Ambler Treatment Plant. And, and it's an old treatment plant, but we've, we've, it, we've kept it up along with our neighbors because it's a, it's a consortium-type treatment plant. As many townships involved in, with Ambler. Ambler's the owner and operator of the plant, but it's, there's a lot of work going into this. So.
Mark?
Yes, yes, Ed.
I, I want to clarify the fact that the, the doctor's comments, I do not want to imply that I'm against this resolution or the work that's being done by multiple municipalities. I just want to make sure the public knows that the brunt of this cost as of stands now is strictly on the local municipalities. But I do not want to imply that, and if I have, it's a mistake on my part, that I'm, I'm not against what's being done. So I just want to make that clear.
No, I, I didn't, I didn't take it that way, Mr. Brand, at all. I mean, I, I understand it is an unfunded mandate and I, I watch the budget pretty closely as I know the rest of the supervisors do. And, and you know, we, we, we're stewards. I think we're pretty reasonable stewards of the township's resources. And this, this is a pretty big bill. But I didn't take it that way at all. And Dr. Schaefer is right. There's a lot of knock-on benefits to this. And we hope to exploit those. And I think the Wizard Hicken will be a nicer place. It's pretty nice now, but I think it'll be even a better place to enjoy and recreate along the, the length of the Wizard Hicken. So it's, again, for those who don't know, I would take, take a short hike up to the Upper Gwinnett Township building right behind it and, and see the creek from that point of view. It's pretty spectacular. Are there any more questions from the audience, Craig?
Uh, let me see if I can find some. I'm not seeing any more, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can I have a motion for Resolution 2021-07?
No move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up is the 2015 Multimodal Grant Engineering Change Order. And I don't think Chad is here tonight.
Right, Chad, Chad couldn't be here tonight. Stephanie Butler and Sean Hughes are here from McMahon. Basically, what we're looking here is, is due to the, some of the delays that occurred in the, oh, what we're talking about is the grant to do the culvert at Sumney Town Pike and Bethlehem Pike. If anyone has been through the township in the last few months, you'll see the big construction vehicles and work being done over at that corner. That project started back in September of 2019 with the first pre-construction meeting that had several delays due to right-of-way acquisition, county highway occupancy permit and some utility company delays. And then once we got that all through, we had COVID delays. So here we are, March 2021. And we're going to finalize that hopefully by the end of this, this month. But due to the, what, what was supposed to be a three-month project has turned into a whatever September 2019 is to March 2021. And McMahon has been on top of things since then. But the original budget was for $45,000 for the engineering by the traffic engineer McMahon. They're looking at a, a new number of, of total number, which includes the original $45,000 budget of $75,780. And Stephanie and Sean both believe that they could bring that number down to $75,000. So so what we're looking for is just a change order in the additional amount of $30,000 for traffic engineering on a project. Just as another reminder, the project is a one point, one and a half million or one, one, about $1.1 million in grant funding and another $400,000 in township match. So about 1.5 million total project that we're looking to, for a $30,000 increase due to the several different delays. On the better side of that is that it looks like we're going to becoming under budget on the construction side of it. So this will not impact the total number, the total cost of the project. However, I wanted to bring to the attention of the additional $30,000 for engineer.
Hmm. I took a look at the, the Engineering Change Order. And I, I didn't see this, so I'm going to ask Stephanie, right? And I'm, I'm making a big assumption here, Stephanie, right? And I did talk to Chad about this because I wanted to make sure I understood it, right? So as far as I know, we're still within our township contribution level that's budgeted for that. Is, is that correct?
That is correct. This, um, this particular grant actually included a, a, a local match of $440,000. And I believe to date, at least from the information I know, we have spent roughly, I think. roughly, I think, 330. So if we add this 30, it'll be 360. Those are round numbers. I just want to stress that this particular change order is for primarily the construction administration of the project as well as the inspection of the project. It is, it's, it's an, an engineering cost on the whole, but it's related to the construction inspection and administration of the contract and the coordination with the contractor doing the project.
Yeah, I, I was a little surprised to hear that North Penn Water, we had, we had some utilities that had to be moved as well because I thought, I know there's a lot of utilities in the area, but I didn't even realize that North Penn Water company had utility right there at the bridge, but apparently they did. Chad, Chad assured me in that one of the reasons that this occurred was because of the, the, the permitting process, because you, you can't just, you can't just arbitrarily move pipes because they're in the way or, or whatever. So.
So I would say both, both North Wales Water as well as Pico Gas had to file for their own general permits in order to do the work within, in the stream area. In our earlier coordination with them, they had agreed they were going to file for those permits. And it turns out it took, they did not file for those permits until much later in the process. So that was part of the reason for the delay on the front end. And then it was just the coordination efforts with the contractor moving forward. I would like to also just point out that North Wales Water, this, the amount of the project does not include North Wales Waters costs to relocate their lines. That's a reimbursement agreement between the township and North Wales Water. So anything associated with their cost is not part of the project cost. As that, that'll be reimbursed by them. So, but yes, they did have to file for their own permits. And they had to coordinate with us and it took them longer to do so. I guess it's the way to say it.
So, so the matching dollars. So we're still okay with the, the matching component of it. So we haven't exceeded the cost and that with respect to that?
That, not to mind. As far as the engineering and the inspection, this will still stay under that. I don't, I don't know, Craig, if there's been other costs associated with the project.
Nope.
Mark, I have a question. Can I have like a 10,000 foot view of what this project is about and why we're doing it?
Stephanie, you're the perfect person to answer that.
Absolutely. So this project is, is we, we refer to this project as Spring House Phase One. And the reason we're calling it Phase One is it's the culvert widening that's happening on Summey Town Pike. And it's, it's really what needed to happen in order to accommodate Spring House Phase Two, which is the ultimate widening of Norristown Road, Summey Town Pike through the intersection to provide some additional travel lanes. Spring House Phase Two is in the engineering phase. Now that all the, the grant agreement for that side has been executed with ten dot, we are progressing with that, that phase of the project. So the culvert widening had to happen before the road widening could be done. And the reason it was split up instead of altogether was the township initially received this first grant for a million, $27,000, which wasn't enough to pay for the whole project together at once. But it did pay for the culvert widening. So we had to phase the project accordingly in order to fit the budget of the grants that were provided or that were awarded to the township.
Thank you, Stephanie. What, what is the purpose? Are we expecting more runoff? Why is the culvert being widened?
The, the culvert is being widened so that we can ultimately widen that section of the road to accommodate an additional travel lane through the intersection. That lane will then tie into the right turn lane that goes into the shopping center. And likewise, on the other side of the intersection on Norristown Road, we're going to be widening for an additional travel lane.
So when you say widening, you mean widening the road, not the actual depth of the culvert?
Correct. We're widening the road. So.
Okay, so what you're doing is moving the.
The culvert might be this long across the road and tomorrow it'll be this long because we're going to add more lanes, travel lanes.
I see. And built into the budget, is there anything about reconstituting the plantings and the, you know, the wildlife along the culvert?
Right adjacent to the culvert? No, that's not part of Phase One. There is a joint permit through DEP that we received for this project. So they did review and evaluate the project and provide a joint, what, what they call a joint permit in order to complete the work. Our limit of work is really very tight to the, to the edge of the culvert. It's not necessarily stream restoration beyond the boundaries of the culvert. Does that make sense?
Okay, so Mark, do we have any funds set aside to try to restore a little bit of the land along the culvert?
I don't believe, well, we, we, our, our budget, as we talked earlier, we have resources in the budget. They're supposed to return the, the land to its pre-existing condition. But I don't believe there's going to be any improvements to it, if that's your question. So they, they have to, you can't add water runoff to my understanding based on the construction. It has to be the same as it was previous. So on the, actually on both sides of the culvert, the condition of the land there, I, I would say was mostly grass. I don't think there was any plantings done. That doesn't mean we can't do it. And in fact, part of the agreement with the EPA DEP is road crossings. We're still yet to define exactly what that means. Because road crossings, we have a lot of roads that cross the tributaries that dump into the Wissa Hicken. So we're, that's not currently on the table, but we've talked to EPA DEP about it. Because we may have to remediate that as part of the plans as we move forward. But there's nothing specific that was targeted other than restoration of the stream bank to its prior condition for this project. I don't know if that answers your question, but that, that's where it is.
Okay, no, I appreciate all the input. I, I didn't really know exactly what the whole project was about, but I would like to advocate for restoring the, the banks of that culvert to something that would be more ecologically friendly than gravel and grass. So we, we can take that offline and discuss it with maybe Mark Schaefer and get the input from the Wissa Hicken Trails as to how that should be restored. Because every tributary contributes to the state of the Wissa Hicken, as you know. And we should have some long-term strategy that anytime one of these culverts or tributaries is disturbed, we return it to a more natural state.
What you're talking about is enhanced state. I, I'm agreeing with you. And we could certainly plant native flora and fauna. We could really, we, we can enhance it, right? There's no doubt about it. And actually, that might be a, a project for the, for the EAC, the Environmental Committee of the Township. Because as time goes on, we're going to have, there's, there's more construction. There's, there's more disturbance of the tributaries. That's actually something that we can have another discussion on, but I, I think it's a very good idea.
Thanks.
Yep. Is there any other questions from the supervisors? I'll take that as a no. Craig, is there anybody from the audience?
Mr. Schaefer has his hand up again.
Mr. Schaefer.
I, I was just responding to Tessie's comment. I had done a photo survey of that culvert area, the Willow Run there for the EAC before they finished the shopping center. And it was fairly degraded environmentally on both sides because on the one side, it was the backside of a, a gas station. So it, it really wasn't in great shape. So anything we do to improve it would be, would be helpful. Although I believe on the, the property immediately to the one side of the culvert on the shopping center side belongs to the shopping center. That was in a land swap. So we really, it's private property right now. We can request, but I don't think we're in a position to enhance in that sense. On the other side of Willow Run, there has been enhancement with a, a bridge that was put in by the township for, for a trail crossing. And then beyond that, you get, again, once you get into private property. But if you're interested, I've got a photographic essay of the whole thing on file.
Yeah, you did a great job with that. It must have been five years ago, Mark?
Something like that, yes, sir.
Yeah, you did. So, so we know exactly what it looked like. And the shopping center old owner, Stoltz, has been very cooperative with requests in the past for assistance in the township to make, make things look better and improvements and so forth. And we can always ask them to be involved too. So there's, there's many things that we can do.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that if it was degraded before the construction started, that, that then our aim, ultimate aim should be to make it better. You know, returning it to a more natural state, which would help with flooding downstream and so forth.
Right. That's a true statement. Is there any other questions for the audience, Craig?
Have Ree Monahan with her hand up?
Okay, Ree.
Ree, let me try to unmute you. Ree?
Okay, there you go. Okay. So I just want to kind of dovetail on what has been discussed already. Under the township, probably five, six years ago, along the same timeline, we did apply for a Growing Greener Grant. And the way I presented it to DEP and the township presented it was that it was going to be in multi-stages. So we have the two basin retrofits behind the Ingersoll property. And part of that grant application stated that we would move forward with retrofits hopefully to Willow Run to include the Whole Foods Shopping Center. So to Tessie's point too, I think that's something that we can revisit. And I think that DEP is well aware of the intention to move forward with other enhancements.
That, that sounds great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ree. Is there anybody else with their hand up, Craig?
I'm not seeing anyone else.
Okay. You need a motion for this, is that correct, Craig?
Yes, I motion to, for a change order for McMahon for the Construction Administration and Inspection Services to change the budget from $45,000 to $75,000.
Yeah, okay. So can I have a motion from the board, please?
So moved.
I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is authorized, authorized advertisement of the cable franchise agreement between the township and Verizon. Greg?
Yes, back in 2006, we went into our first cable franchise agreement with Verizon. It was a 12-year agreement. And it obviously expired in 2018. We started negotiations with the Cohen Law Group back in 2016 through the Montgomery County Consortium. And there's about 30, 30 some odd municipalities that partnered together for everyone to go back to the franchise agreement for each municipality. We thought doing it together made, made a lot of sense. However, it took four, five, five years now to get this agreement under at least to some kind of final stage here and which was sent out to everyone. This one is only a five-year term. Basically, they're saying that a lot of customers are eliminating the cable services and going elsewhere. So they did not want to go out as far as, as in previous years. So I guess they're worried about people falling off of the cable, cable services. So it's a five-year term with 5% of the cable subscribers back to the municipality. And just to give some reference, in 2020, we collected $281,829.38 from both Verizon and Comcast. This is just the authorized advertisement of this ordinance and for review. And we would be back to the board for hopefully an approval at a later date.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the supervisors? Okay, is there any questions from members of the public?
I am not seeing anything, Mr. Chairman.
Can I have a motion?
Don't move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Next up, e-cycle and paper shredding event scheduled for May the 15th. Jamie, I think I saw your name on the agreement, if I got that right. Yeah, here it is. Could you fill us in, please?
This is just a memo that I had provided with information about hosting a shredding and e-cycle day. As you recall, in 2020, it was canceled because of COVID. The two vendors that we had lined up for that event have agreed to provide the same service this year at the same price. And I've gone back and forth with the Montgomery County Recycling Commission and EEP to kind of find out what the requirements and restrictions are for a municipal recycling day with COVID restrictions, which, what we have to abide by. And going through all of the requirements, our parking area that we, the parking lot of the municipal building where we hold the event, we have, will have no problem complying. Right now, the order is 20 people per 1,000 square feet. We can have upwards of 200 people. And we never have that many people on the site at once anyway. But the idea would be that we would have an officer who would be checking license. So you make sure that the person is a resident. And then everybody would be required to either have the materials that they are recycling in the, the trunk of their car, the bed of a pickup truck or a trailer so that they can remain in their car. And then the, the employees and the vendor staff would funnel them through and then they would actually remove the items from their vehicles and place them in the appropriate locations. So to avoid people getting out and that interaction so that we can comply with the COVID requirements. And we have to submit the information to DEP for approval 60 days prior. So we have everything ready to go. We just need the board to, you know, make their decision as to whether or not they want to hold the event. And, and if they want to use the vendors that we have included.
Right. So this includes the e-waste recycle. Is that correct?
Yes.
And this is only open to township residents, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Have we made any provisions for checking to make sure that the, that the people dropping these, this waste off are township residents?
Yes, in the past, and our plan would be to do the same. We've had a police officer who is at the entrance and he, he checks the license. We, we, in all of the paperwork that we put out prior to the event, we tell people that you, you know, you have to have proper identification that shows that you are a resident of the township.
Okay. And the cost of this is $4,450, is that correct?
That's for the e-cycle. That's for the e-cycle portion of it, and then it's two thousand for the shredding.
Okay, is that a a change from two thousand and nineteen?
No.
It's the same price. So we have all the price the same. And how how many hours will this be open?
And the event will be held from eight in the morning till twelve, four hours.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other supervisors that have any questions?
Yes, I don't have a question, Mark. I'd like to make a comment. Having been been on the Northern Montgomery County Recycling Commission for twenty five years. And now Jamie represents the township, having served as vice president for five and president for twenty years. The Northern Montgomery County Recycling Commission enables the township to get reimbursement from D E P on our recycling that we submit to the state. And the checks come through back to the township in the amount of anywhere from twenty five thousand to forty thousand dollars a year. And this is the a natural way for us to be doing this. We've done this for eight to ten years. And it's a it's a thank you to our residents for recycling. And we extend it to e-cycle and the paper shredding on site. And not being able to last year, I know Mark, yourself and myself have commented how we're storing different things that we want to drop off on May fifteenth. This has been strictly a lower Guinnett Township project. We we don't work with the state. It's a project for the township, and it's a thank you to our residents who enabled us to re recoup the monies that they have enabled because of the recycling that we have done through the state and the Northern Montgomery County Recycling Commission. So I don't have any questions. I I just hope that the supervisors continue to support this project that the residents need and they look forward to every year. And a lot of questions as for when is it going to be? So I thank Jamie for continuing to work on this. And also Craig with his approval. And I'm hoping that the Board of Supervisors give this a five zero vote.
Jamie, can you repeat the date again, please?
I would. Yeah, it would be Saturday, May fifteenth.
Thank you.
I have a question. Does the the check that we get from the recycling go into the Township General Fund? Or is it earmarked?
No, the check goes to our township manager. And it's a it's a present that goes to him and he earmarks it where he sees fit. So if you want to ever get your manager to smile, you show up with that check that's made out to Lower Guinnett Township, and you give it to the manager, and he will find a place for it. So it's not earmarked, Tessie, in any way, shape or form. It's made out to the township.
In the past, it has been used for recycled benches and recycled material to give back. And also for this this day of e-cycling and paper shredding.
I had a question. Has it ever been considered or discussed about having it in a different location so as to not encumber traffic along Bethlehem Pike? And I say this only because it had been brought to my attention by different residents that it's, I guess, harder or difficult to get down Bethlehem Pike near the Township Building during that period of time. I don't know if traffic's the same during COVID or if people are traveling the same Saturday mornings amidst the pandemic, but I just wanted to know, is that something that anyone considered? A space where people, you know, traffic could, I guess, easily flow and not be spilling out into the street?
Danielle, if I could answer that, over the last eight to ten years that we've done this, we have never had a problem with traffic. They line up on the curb side, on the shoulder side, coming basically from the major intersection, make a right-hand turn. The movement is very good. But we can get comments from our manager and our assistant manager also. But we have never had a problem in the past with traffic.
Yeah, traffic does flow pretty well on Bethlehem Pike. There's only been a few times that the traffic is out on the Bethlehem Pike. I mean, we we move people in and out fairly quickly. I mean, we and this year, as in any other year, if if everyone stays in their cars, it'll work tremendously better than people that want to get out of their cars and watch things happen. That causes more of the bottle up than the having the event at the Township Building.
No, that was my question. I don't know if has it always been drop and roll? I call it a drop and roll where you don't get out and you they just take your stuff and you just keep on going.
It has been. We have not. We have never. If anyone wanted to watch their stuff get shredded or or look at anything, we just ask them to park away from the the away from the traffic in the parking lot and then walk over. But it does cause different delays, we'll say, when that happens. So with this year that we're not letting anyone out of their vehicles, and we can be assured to everyone that we are shredding the paper right there on site. We are not holding it. We're not putting it in my pickup truck or anything like that. It is getting shredded there. Once the township or once the vehicles are full, we do not accept anymore. We don't. We don't save it for, you know.
So are we having two? Is it two vehicles?
Yes.
Whatever they fill up first or four hours?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions from the supervisors? Okay, are there any questions from the audience?
Have a hand up, Melinda Wolf?
Yes. Hi, thank you. This is so great. I'm looking forward to this. Missed it last year. Two questions. One, what are the limits on the electronics? Some of sometimes it's been not necessarily your township, but if it's over a certain size, you have to pay money to to donate it or to have it recycled? Is that true with this or is anything anything recyclable?
That's true with most of the places. In this specific instance, we do not charge anyone. We we did try that one year and it just didn't really work out very well. So the township has or the supervisors have agreed to pay that lump sum for everyone to get rid of anything with a plug. So.
Okay.
You can thank the board here for that one.
Okay, thank you. Has to do with you talked about a flatbed or a car with a trunk. We have a SUV which doesn't have like enclosed trunk. But what that's acceptable, isn't it?
Yes, I mean, you would still be you would still be six feet away from anyone that's opening the trunk and and grabbing paper or electronics out of it. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. Is there any other questions in the audience?
I have a comment if you want me to read that.
Sure, go ahead.
The township has done a wonderful job regarding traffic flow and overall organization of this event from Ree Monahan. Thank you, Ree.
Thanks, Ree.
Right. Okay, can I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next up is a request for Ambler Borough for funding from Lower Guinnett Township to fill out their grant application. So, you know, Craig, Craig, why don't you explain what this is?
I will try. I received a call from Todd Stevens, State Representative Todd Stevens, to have a call with the the Borough Manager and Ambler and Larry Burns from Horsham Township who administers a grant called the Military Installation, Remediation and Infrastructure Author Authority Grant in which Ambler is looking to do some upgrades on their water wells in the in in the borough. As some of you know, portions of Lower Guinnett Township get their water from the borough. And this year, Ambler Borough is doing three wells, which which help Lower Guinnett Township. And they have put that money out for a grant, and they received the grant that will be completed this year. They're looking to put in another grant for next year, which is due May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty one, in order to upgrade the well, another well, which is one of the primary wells in Lower Guinnett Township. And that the cost, the overall cost of the project is a million dollars. There would be a matching fund of twenty five percent, which would be two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So Ambler is asking Lower Guinnett Township if we would put in the matching funds for this grant in order for them to upgrade their water well.
All right, so just so everybody knows, right, this is a complicated subject. Earlier in the year, Danielle, myself, Todd Stevens, and I think it was the Chief of Staff from Senator Colette's office, met with with Ambler. So most people may may not be aware that there's something called forever chemicals in the ground. Those chemicals have come from the Little Grove Air Base. And they have migrated over the years or however long they've been putting these chemicals down in the on the ground and subsequently into the groundwater at the airbase. And it's migrated to the drinking wells of surrounding communities. And one of the one of the water providers that has got a problem with this or an issue with that is the Ambler Water Company. Now, the Ambler Water Company serves Lower Guinnett Township. It is not a township-owned utility. Last I looked, there were approximately five wells that the filters need to go on for Lower Guinnett Township. So after we had the meeting with Todd Stevens and and Senator Colette, Senator Colette's office in Ambler, I I asked Craig to put two hundred fifty thousand into the budget. Craig, did that money get in there?
It did.
Yeah, good. So I saw this coming. So so putting these filters on each of these wells. And I don't want to get too far in the weeds as to what kind of filters they have to be. But there's there's two kinds of costs. There's the upfront cost and there's recurring costs. So those filters have to be maintained. And these filters, at least my understanding, these filters will take out those forever chemicals as well as any other contaminant that may be in the the water. So it's to our benefit to have these wells retrofitted with the filters. I just want to make sure everybody understands Ambler Water is providing water to Lower Guinnett Township that is clean and meets the EPA guidelines. That's very important to understand that. But what this is all about is to make sure that that water supply is as clean as is possible. Now, for those of you that don't know, there are two water systems, two water companies that supply water to Lower Guinnett. That's North Penn Water Company in Ambler. Now, we have only two. Upper Dublin, I believe, has either has four or possibly five. So depending on the water provider and where they're getting their water from, is it the supplier has different requirements based on the quality of the water that they're providing. So what we know is these these wells need these filters on it. And the Ambler Water Company needs some help. So, okay, I I think I've thought about this a lot. I've talked to Danielle. I've talked to a number of people over over the years, actually, about clean drinking water. And I think this is a necessary thing to do, but this is my opinion, right? That that the water we drink is really important. I'd also like to point out that the water coming out of Ambler serves the Wizard Hickon School Jurassic Campus. And that campus during the day has approximately, well, pre-COVID, has approximately three thousand students on it. And they and they get their water from there as well. They're drinking it. They're swimming in it. So it's it's pretty important that we have the cleanest water possible. But I I also felt that it was important that, you know, the other supervisors are aware of this and that I had Craig put it in the budget because I felt that this was going to come our way in two thousand and twenty one, and now it has. So I would like the supervisors to to comment if you if you would, or or if you have any comments.
Well, I I like to make a comment, and I want to thank Danielle and yourself by acting as a subcommittee for the Board of Supervisors. The purpose of the subcommittees is to do exactly what you've done, which is representing the township not in a majority form and giving us a report. You you've given us excellent comments, and it's very obvious to me and probably other supervisors that we want exactly what you stated, Mark. And thank you for mentioning to Craig to put the put aside in the budget, which he says he has for this appropriation. So I'd be definitely in favor of it, and I'd be surprised if my fellow supervisors aren't also.
Thank you, Ed.
And I'm not. And I'd also like to thank Representative Stevens and Senator Colette for the continued work on the PFAS issue over in Horsham, and it certainly does affect us and very much in support of this effort here. And would like to continue to support Representative Stevens and Colette on their continued efforts.
Thank you, Cal.
I have just a couple of questions, and I'm not saying that I don't support Representative Stevens and Colette. But having participated in the conversations with you, Mark, there's just a lot of unopen or open-ended concerns that I have, especially as being a resident who does receive their water from Ambler. Not as it necessarily just relates to clean water, but also as it relates to the ongoing maintenance. Are we going to, A, be assuming the responsibility to maintain filters? I know about the the carbon filters as as we move forward, the life expectancy of that filter. And if we can't consistently depend upon Ambler to ensure that our water will be consistent and that the pipes delivering that that water will be consistent, ultimately, what good would a filter benefit us? You understand what I'm saying? So I'm thinking I'm thinking about, and I know what we were put, this was all part of the conversation that we had. We're getting our water from Ambler on antiquated pipes that we know need upgrading. And and there is some financial restriction around getting them upgraded. But living in a part of Ambler where we spent a significant number of days during the pandemic without water, me and my neighbors, and it also affected, I'm assuming, the high school. I'm not sure exactly how far up it went. But knowing that that is that is the case and knowing that Amber currently does not to maintain their filter, are we doing a service to our constituents and our residents of Lower Guinnett by continuing to receive our water from Ambler? I know that that's not totally our decision, but it implores me to question, why can't we shift our whole township to North Penn Water? Given the fact that we're understanding that there's a there's a there's a responsibility that we're assuming in allowing Ambler to deliver our water to part of our township and knowing that some of those pipes are not being maintained adequately? And then as we move forward, they're not going to get better as far as their effectiveness.
Boy, you you've asked a whole bunch of questions here, right? So, yes, the Ambler Water System is not as current as I would certainly like it. Everybody has to have treatment in their homes because the water is so hard. The the pipes are way out of date. Not all of them, but many of them, which is which is not a good situation. There's been a number of interruptions. There's been a number of interruptions in your surrounding neighborhoods, Danielle, that you're aware of. And, and it was not a pleasant situation for the people living there. We, we didn't know, nor do we have any jurisdictional oversight as to what Ambler does because they're, they're their own water company and they, they supply the drinking water to us. And Ambler has requested, um, to change their status of their water company to, to a municipal authority at the same time all of this is going on. And we asked Neil, uh, well, I, I don't know. I guess we all did, right? We asked Neil to, to, uh, make sure that, uh, Lower Guanah was well represented as were some other townships on a municipal board for the water company. That resulted in, um, actions at the PUC. Now, Neil, Neil, I'm going to put you on the spot just a little bit. Where are we with those, uh, actions in front of the PUC?
The action before the PUC was filed by Ambler Borough in an attempt to convert from a public utility to a municipal authority. And the underlying purpose for that was essentially to get out from under, uh, PUC oversight specifically as it relates to rate increases. That litigation is pending before the Public Utility Commission. It's been assigned to a judge and we're currently in discovery whereby we sought a great deal of information from Ambler Borough as to what their basis is for this application, uh, to convert to a municipal authority. So that litigation is ongoing. It's likely not to be resolved until sometime during, uh, the summer, I would estimate.
So, so there's a, there's a lot of moving parts to this that we're, we're trying to stay on top of. And it's like so many utilities, you don't notice them unless they're gone, right? So, so we like to keep the, uh, the water flowing, your, your trash picked up, et cetera. So, uh, we're working on this. I think there are-
I just, I kind of wanted to paint a larger picture for the residents and the, and I guess the constituencies to be aware of. Especially as it relates to the individuals who are receiving their water from Ambler and being one of those individuals, I feel like I can adequately say, you know, it hasn't been a pleasant, pleasant experience, at least for the past few years. There's been a significant number of, of days that we did not have water and there was no, you know. There is a reason the main broke, but you know, there's, there's no recourse as, as it relates to patching it is not going to ultimately fix that problem. Knowing that and knowing that, you know, there is the contaminants that are man-made in the ground that we have to contend with and we would like to have clean drinking water. Um, and this filter in essence would fix that problem. But knowing those factors and knowing the fact that, you know, there is a portion of our township that doesn't have any of these issues. Um, and we're going to then double down and put quarter of a million dollars to, to, to give Ambler the ability to obtain a filter so that we can have, you know, this chemical eliminated from our drinking water. It's almost doubling down on something that hasn't been the, um, best circumstances up to this point, if that makes sense. And what does, where does that lead us as far as maintaining the filter? What financial responsibility will we have? That hasn't been explained to me. And, and more importantly, does it give us any leverage to implore Ambler to, um, ensure that some of the maintenance of the mains that are, you know, that the water is being delivered to our residents, uh, is at least maintained adequately? If not, is there any steps for us to implore them to allow the township to be completely serviced by North Penn?
Well, the, the other piece that's missing here is that the infrastructure that Ambler Water uses to deliver their water to our residents is owned by them.
And so North Penn ultimately have to assume that and either maintain it or upgrade it or. Yes, that I am aware.
Now, in, in speaking with the Borough Manager, uh, over the past month, I don't have anything written down. I don't have anything, nothing in concrete except the verbal commitment that, you know, she, they are looking at the infrastructure and they're hoping to have a capital plan together for, um, our area, um, to upgrade all the pipes or I, I won't say all the pipes, but pipes in our area, um, in the next, in, in very short time. That's not in writing. That was a conversation we had. But she did ensure that they, they know there is some infrastructure problems and that they would be putting some money into that system. You know, she is looking at, you know, moving to the authority and saying that, yeah, if they were able to move to the authority, they wouldn't probably be asking us for this, this grant, um, match. At the same time, I don't know if she's saying the same thing about the infrastructure. They don't go to the authority. I don't know if the infrastructure is going to go in.
The understanding that they're moving to the authority releases them from the requirements of the PUC, which allows them to raise the rates at their own discretion.
Right.
And there is representation on the board, but we can't determine if the rest, you know, the representation would be equitable as it relates to the cert, you know, the individuals or the customers that are servicing. But that's, that's neither here nor there. Has there been any explanation as to if we're going to be required to maintain the filter?
This, I mean, the conversations I had with everyone was that this was, uh, you know, our, our contribution to the, uh, the upgrade. That's it. There is no more monetary requirement by the township at this point. And I would say if this was, if you guys were inclined to approve this, that we would have our solicitor write some kind of agreement to such that, you know, say they didn't get the, uh, grant for next year or this year, that we get that money back. It, it just doesn't float from year to year. And also that this is a one-time contribution, um, from Lower Guanah to Ambler. No strings attached to it.
Has there been any discussion or do we know if there are any other municipality that receives their water from Ambler is also contributing to maintain or at least purchase the filter for their, uh, the, the well that addresses them?
I do not know that. I, I don't know that. I know there's other municipalities that get Ambler water because there's five of us.
Yes.
Now, I've, I've talked to Paul Leonard, who's the manager in Upper, Upper Dublin. And I don't know what their contribution levels are, but they're making some. And this gets back to the governance issue, right? So the governance issue really gets around, uh, the municipal authority. I, I want to seat on that municipal authority in, in proportion to, uh, our standing in the, in the water company. I don't want, I don't want Ambler or any one group to have super majority. That's really what we're talking about here, uh, because it's a community water system. And Ambler is a very small entity, but they're serving, last I checked, over five thousand individual accounts. Right? Not five thousand people, but accounts. So there's, like I said, there's about three thousand people in, in the, in the Wizard Hickon School complex. But anyway, um, so if we can approach this from the governance issue, I think we can get a lot of this addressed. But they have to agree in the PUC judge that's involved, I'm hoping will allow us to get a, a more reasonable a, approach, if we can get everybody to agree how, what the way forward is. Because this is a very murky area. No one, this may sound strange, but there's very little legislative underpinnings as, as to these community water supplies. And, uh, it's a sight-on-scene type of, uh, organization, but our, our pipes are old. We don't have any, any commitments going forward, other than we've got a grant and they've got matching money that they need. And I think we start with that because that'll help, we're, we're trying to stop the bleeding, so to speak. Get the, get the filter on, get it up and running. And then let's see where we go from here. But I'm agreeing with your governance issues. Danielle, we have to have more oversight and that water and, uh, infrastructure to our residents needs to, needs an upgrade.
If I may make a comment, Mark?
Sure, go, go ahead, Mr. President.
It's very apparent to a lot of the residents in the lower end and I depend on Amber Water. Even my, the old neighborhood I was in, Merrill Hills across from the BMW dealership, that's also Amber Water. And, um, the, uh, the subcommittee, um, of Danielle and yourself, the questions that Danielle has brought up, uh, are there, they're existing. And being on the subcommittee, these, uh, the answers aren't going to be readily available. So we have to take this step by step. It would be great, uh, if you did a survey of the people that are getting Amber Water. They would, uh, switch to North Penn, uh, North Wales Water, um, tomorrow, if you give them a choice, but we don't have that choice. And Danielle has brought up a major issue, uh, of infrastructure. Uh, having the main, uh, broken down there, uh, on Knight Road and them being out of water for as long as they have, they had. I, I don't know where we're going with, uh, Amber Water, uh, trying to pass on a lot of these future improvement costs to all the surrounding municipalities. And, uh, because that the infrastructure has to be addressed. I think they're looking at one huge bill. And, um, I think we have to move on this request about the filters. But continue in our effort in a subcommittee and a full committee of, uh, taking a look at how the residents of Lower Guanah that are serviced by Amber Water are protected. That's the end of my comments.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from supervisors?
While I, I have a concern that this is a, um, maybe a Band-Aid, uh, fix. It, it seems like it's something we need to go ahead and do. But I, I do have the same concern about a long-range strategy for the situation and how it is that we can get more of a, a voice in the situation going forward. So I, I, we don't have to decide that tonight. I, I just think that, and, and you appreciate this, Mark. I know that we need to have, uh, more of a voice into this situation with Ambler.
I, I would agree in Neil's, uh, approach, the instructions he got was to help us do exactly that. But this is going to need to be a multi-pronged approach with all of our neighbors. And I'm pretty sure Ambler knows that because this is a serious problem. And I, I just want to make sure everybody understands too, although the infrastructure for, for North Penn Water is, is much, um, much newer. They still have a forever chemical problem. They're not, um, they're not free of that. So it's, it's all the water systems in the surrounding area. So we got a chance to get a filter on. There's grant money involved. I think we grabbed that and we moved forward. And like I said, I had Craig put it in the budget, so this wouldn't upset our, our plans. But I'm, I'm with you. You're, this is, this is not going to be an overnight fix. There's no way. This is, this is going to wind up being a multi-year fix. And you've got to remember too, this is well water for the most part. So our water runoff in our, our, uh, storm water, our sewer and our drinking water, it's all connected. And, uh, we just got to make sure that we understand and look at it from a system point of view. So we need to approve all of the components of it. And, uh, it's not easy. So it's a lot, we've got a lot of work to do yet. So, uh, but we've started. And our, and our legislators have started. They know what the issues are too. What wasn't appreciated was how many people that Lower Guanah, um, has in it that gets the drinking water. It's, it's not the account that matters. As a school system, I think has either one or three accounts over there. It's the, it's the people it serves. It's, it's three thousand people on that campus, just for an example. Um, and so it's, it's a much bigger than problem than was, uh, originally, uh, looked at. But, but we've got to move on here. Are there any questions from the audience, Craig?
I'm not seeing anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to, um, grant Ambler Borough's, uh, funding request?
Can we make the, can we make the specific motion to include the, the statement that Craig said he'll ensure that they sign drafted by Neil?
Okay, we can do that. Uh, can you add that, Neil, to the, uh? Okay, very good. So, so can I have a motion now?
So moved.
Can I have a second? All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is authorization to, uh, advertise the solicit bid for resurfacing of the courts at Penland Park. Craig?
Yes, this was a recommendation from the Park and Rec Board that came over. It was in the budget for this year. Um, so what we want to do right now is have Gilmore provide a bid and go out to bid and see what kind of numbers we, uh, come back with for the, uh, court resurfacing down at Penland Park.
Craig, I got a phone call from a company, uh, th- there's companies already taking a look at this situation now. So they must have known about this.
Okay, um, yeah, we, we had a couple come out just to give us a quote to put in the budget. But I'm not sure.
Okay.
If you can forward that name and number to me, um, I could have, um, Gilmore send them the bid when it's prepared.
Well, they must be anticipating already getting it and they must have been in touch with somebody on their staff because they knew about it. And they're already inspecting the sites. So I, I just thought I'd mention that as a comment. There's nothing wrong with them doing a heads up ahead of time, but.
Yeah, we don't have the bids together, so I don't know what they're even, uh, uh, well, anyway, okay, great.
I make a motion that we authorize the solicit bids for resurfacing the courts at Penland Park.
Okay, hold on. Thank you, Ed. And are any of the supervisors have any questions?
I, I do. Um, so, oh, well, I'm reading this now. It says the township engineers have looked at the location. Or is there going to be, uh, an engineering report, um, so that we understand that this, uh, job is going to be you know, in, engineering, um, correctly, uh, not just the, i- is that part of the RFA?
Jim? Yeah, the, the- We, we'll put together, uh, specs of what the treatment will be to resurface the courts. Craig, we were going to go with the stone dust overlay. Is that correct?
I thought we were looking at both options, but we can discuss that.
Okay, so, any, any solution that we use will have been, uh, done in other municipalities. Most recently, uh, in Horsham and Montgomery Township. So if, uh, you're interested in, in seeing what the treatment is and how it's held up over time, I could get you, um, n- names of those parks to go take a look.
I would be, I think, if you can do that by Friday, I can put it in the manager's report, yeah.
Yeah, I can certainly get that to you. Does that answer your question, Tessie?
Yes, I just want to, I, I know, um, in, um, hearing about this situation, there, there are cracks in the asphalt and I just wanted to make sure that we had, uh, an engineering firm, uh, involved with this process, uh, so that, uh, w- we have, you know, a long-term solution.
Yeah, and prior to putting the, the budget number in there, Craig had, um, me and another gentleman from my office who kind of specializes in, in this stuff, come out and take a look. And, you know, we, we concurred with sort of the, the budget number and there's multiple options. But, um, you know, both of them wo- would hold up over time and be engineered solutions essentially.
All right. Thank you very much, Jim.
And, and I think we can consider the resurfacing in actual long-term.
And, and I think we can consider the resurfacing an actual long-term solution. We've been, um, patching and band-aiding this area for a couple of years now and it's at the point where it's a safety concern and I'm even curious if Divit, the insurance kinda flagged it as something that we need to take care of in terms of our, uh, liability insurance, but that aside, um, I think it's only gonna continue to deteriorate. So the time has come, in my opinion.
I just wanted to add that we're gonna ensure, because I know that we did a patch a few years ago and then we still have the cracks. I don't know if it's a tree or some kind of roots coming through. Can we ensure that whatever we do is, has some kind of warranty, has some kind of guarantee that we're doing it properly and installing it properly? So that it's not two or three years down the line and we need to do it again?
So a, a standard warranty on something like this would be 18 months from completion of, of the project. So you'd at least get once, one full season of, I, I think honestly, you've got a potentially a freezing and thawing i- issue with some maybe groundwater getting trapped underneath. Um, but the solutions that we're proposing are to c- to correct an issue such as that. So, you know, you'd get an eighteen month, eighteen month maintenance period, essentially warranty.
Okay, so the, the solutions that you're suggesting through, I guess, the RFP process would mitigate some of the issues that we're seeing right now is what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
The idea was that some of the water is getting trapped underneath the, uh, the courts. And we're gonna look to, uh, maybe allow the water to, uh, get out from the foundation that's underneath the courts right now.
Like a stone perimeter? I think that's what they have up in, uh.
Like, almost like a French drain type of thing. Yes.
Gotcha.
Okay, are there any more questions from the supervisors? Okay, are there any questions for members of the audience?
Uh, yes, Kathy Morris has her hand up.
Okay, Kathy.
Well, you're muted though, Kath.
There we go. Okay. All right. Well, thank you for putting this on the agenda. But, um, uh, Craig just said, I think the big thing was a drainage issue. Um, so a lot of the, uh, Parks and Recs board members were concerned. Um, more to what Danielle had said and Tessie had said about, um, making sure that this doesn't happen again. Because that was part of what the issue was, was a drainage problem. But it sounds like that's exactly what you're gonna look into, be sure that that doesn't happen again. Um, so we're happy about that. That was our big thing about. The other question one of the board members had was about the materials that would be used. But, um, it sounds like it'll be a good quality material. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kath. Um, Craig, are there any more, uh, hands up in the audience?
I'm not seeing anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, uh, can I have a motion to advertise the solicit bids for resurfacing the courts?
I think.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ed, did you have a comment?
I, when you asked for the motion, I said I thought I made the motion in the beginning.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, you did, you did. My apologies.
That's right.
Next, next up is authorization to purchase new signs for three park locations. Now, um, Danielle and Tessie, you were, you're on, uh, Parks and Rec. Uh, do you have a recommendation? Uh, I know Sandy sent out this, uh, um, memo.
I was unable to attend the last meeting where they made this vote, so I do not. It's gonna be completely up to Tessie.
Uh, yes, I recommend we move forward with it. Um, I'd also like to invite Kathy, uh, to, to make a comment.
Um, I believe, and Craig, you can, um, correct me if I'm wrong. We've launched on a schedule last year or the year, uh, before that to replace all the signs. And this is just the continuation of that effort.
Yeah, we, we, uh, two years ago, we looked at all the signs and, and some of them were mismatched. Um, a lot of, a lot of them were damaged. They were wood and, uh, for, I, I don't know if they're woodpeckers or something was getting onto the signs, so we had holes in them. So, um, so Sandy put a, a program together that they would take the oldest signs and the, the most damaged signs. And we replaced them last year and, and this is the, to complete that task, uh, for the three signs, um, at, uh, Ingersoll Park, Penland Woods, and then there's Truerran Trail. Um, so then, uh, all the signs would look uniform and, uh, and they're carved PVC. So in case, in case the woodpeckers come back, they, they'll fly away, I hope.
Yeah, they, they may not like PVC. So, um, bef- before we go ahead and, well, we can go ahead and do this. But I, I also want a, a sample of this PVC, cause there's all types of PVC, right? Some of it is very brittle when it gets cold. So if you hit it, it's gonna crack. So, uh, the, the total cost on this is how much, Craig? I think I saw eight thousand and change?
Eight thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, and just to note, the budget number was ten thousand.
Right, so, so let's see if we can get a sample here and I wanna find out what kinda warranty. Uh, I don't think there was a, well, I didn't read all of the, uh, uh, document here. I think it was six pages long or something. So is, is there a warranty in this, Craig?
I did not see one, but, um, I can check that out.
Yeah, would you please, I, I, so I, I'd still like to have a vote on this so we could move forward. But I certainly want a warranty on this, so make it contingent. And I want a sample of that PVC. I wanna make sure we get the right stuff for, for eight thousand dollars. I don't wanna have to, those signs, uh, especially at Truell, and I think are only eight years old. So that's when we got the lease from Merck, where I believe it was a dollar. And then we put the trail in and, uh, you know, but if you got woodpeckers, I can understand that, but we wanna make sure that, uh, this PVC is the right stuff.
Well, Craig, is the, is the cost dependent upon the type of material that they're using? Cause if, Mark, if you wanna see a sample and, and potentially would change your mind, would that change the cost?
Yes. Potentially it could.
So do you wanna?
I would imagine, I'm sorry, Danielle. I, I would imagine that Sandy, um, probably made that determination, so you might wanna check with her.
Well, we can, we can have, we can have the signs from, um, oh, Kathy Morris. You have a.
Let me come.
You're waving your hand up.
Yeah, I am. I'm waving and it's up. Um, we already, we already have some. You can see them. Uh, because this is phase two. This is the second phase. You already approved the first one before. So, um, I, I can see them. I wanna say it's Oxford Park. I, we have some right now. So, Mark, you can take a look at them. Um.
Penham or Park and.
Okay, so, so do we, do you know Kathy, if we have a warranty on these signs?
I, I didn't hear that. I, I think that I didn't, because we were, it was just a continuation. This was just the second ti- second round of them. Um, I, what I can say, I mean, I don't, we can find out. I mean, I, I, I know Sandy would make sure that, um, they're longstanding. Um, but what I can also tell you is you can see them better. You know, that, um, we had that gold lettering before that was very difficult to kinda read. Um, some of the, some of the signs, so it's, it's nice and white and bright and they're, they're much nicer.
Okay, you know, look, I, I, I still have some questions on this. Let's, let's table this to the next meeting. And let's check out the warranty. In the meantime, I'll go over to, you said they're at Penham or Park, Craig?
Yes, Penham or Oxford and, um, and I, I could find out what the third one was.
Yeah, that's all. I need is one, as long as they're all the same material.
Yeah.
They're all from the same vendor and the, and we're gonna get the, send the, the, uh, the model of it, the template will be the same.
Yes.
Right, all right. Let's just table this then to the next meeting. Thank you. Next up, uh, authorization for Gilmore Associates. There are engineers, for those that you didn't know, to, uh, perform an I and I, that's inflow and infiltration study in a purchase of a flow meter, uh, to be owned by Lower Gwinnett. Uh, Mr. Hirsch, please fill us in, please.
Thank you, Mark. So there are funds in the 2021 budget for an I and I study and rehabilitation work within, um, sanitary drainage basin B. For your reference, that is the part of the township that is bound by Plymouth Road, DeKalb Pike, Evans Road and Somni Town Pike. Um, infiltration and inflow, um, inflow is, uh, rainwater that gets into your sanitary sewer system. Infiltration is groundwater that gets into your sanitary sewer system. Both of those items are clear water, which, uh, do not need to be treated, uh, by the, the, by the sewer treatment plant. Uh, primarily, we're trying to identify them and eliminate them to, um, reduce your sewer bills, uh, prevent hydraulic overloads at the treatment plants, uh, during rain events. And, um, also, if we identify some of these problems early on, the rehabilitation is much more cost effective than, uh, replacing, uh, the infrastructure. Um, the request in front of you is two parts. One is to authorize Gilmore Associates to, uh, begin the study, participate in the study, conduct the study. The other one is our recommendation that you, uh, Lower Gwinnett buy a meter, um, to, uh, allow for us to install it in, uh, specific manholes within the study area. And it's continually grabbing flow data, um, twenty-four, seven. Um, then at maybe a week or two weeks or, you know, a set amount of time, we go, we take a laptop out, we download all the flow data to that laptop. And then we're comparing that flow data versus rainfall data to see if there's peaks in the system, uh, during rain events that would show us whether or not, um, there's the inflow. Uh, alternative to purchasing a flow meter is a really, uh, kind of like an antiquated process where at night, when not a lot of people are using, uh, the sanitary sewer system and are sleeping, you're, you're opening the manholes and you're looking down and you're measuring whether or not there's, looks like there's excessive flow in there. This, um, having a meter is much more targeted approach.
Okay, now, Jim, how difficult is it gonna be to install, reinstall, uninstall this meter?
Uh, it's not very difficult at all. Um, we, we'd take two people from, from my office. Um, we're confined space, safety trained, uh, so they, they would go down into the manhole. Um, there's like a, a spring, uh, spring sensor that goes on the upstream side of the manhole. And it's about a thirty-minute process to, to put it in and then essentially to, to take it out and move it somewhere else. Um, you got, you got some upfront costs of the, the purchase of the meter. It's like about five thousand two hundred dollars based upon a quote we got, but that, that's everything you need. That's the meter, that's the AV sensors. Um, the computer software's free. Um, your other option is to rent the meters and the installers and such. Um, but to, a quote we got to rent a meter for three months, which is about the study period, i- is, uh, seven thousand two hundred dollars. Um, so, you know, we do these every year, so year two, you're going to recoup some of your costs.
Sure.
Okay, so we're also televising. Uh, is this, this particular, uh, sewer line, uh, difficult to televise or?
It's not, it's not difficult to televise and, um, based on the flow data that we get, then the next step would be to televise. But we wouldn't need to televise every single foot of all these lines if the flow data shows that there's not really an issue in, in the lines.
Uh, Jim, Jim, it's Ed Brandt, and I just wanted to ask you, uh, how was it determined that there was a need for it in that particular, uh, part of the township that you, uh, designated?
So, um, Mike DiStefano approached us about this area, but before he had left. And he had a very good pulse on different drainage basins wi- within the township and, and which one should sort of be evaluated next.
Uh, and it took us this long to to get into it, but it's good, it's good that you remembered that and it's cer- certainly something we have to protect against. Thank you.
No problem. So, so Jim, how many more sites do you think we need to do flow meter checks on?
A, a, a lot. I mean, I usually be doing this every single year.
So we're gonna implement some kind of rotating schedule amongst the, uh, the areas?
Yes, that's the, that's the goal. It's also my understanding that Mike picked this area because it was one of the older, um, parts of the system.
Is, is that schedule already identified and can we like kind of track out how, how many we're gonna do and at what pace?
Um, that's not something that.
Purposes?
Yeah, we, uh, we absolutely can get something, something going.
I think that's.
How many areas do we have, Jim?
Um, I'm not, uh, not exactly sure.
Yeah, no, well, it sounds, it seems that the initial cost is a no-brainer, given how much it costs to rent the, the meter. Um, and I think it's a good exercise in terms of we can avoid the, um, heavier task of televising if we don't need to. That's an added benefit as well.
Yeah, this isn't gonna detect though, um, lines that are damaged with it, Jim.
Um, it will not, but if we're gonna do this, uh, immediately if authorized and with how high groundwater is currently, if you've got a damaged pipe, you're gonna have a whole lot of inflow or infiltration. Um, we just recently, so also, I mean, this is really like to look at the lines more than anything. Public Works opens the manholes on a yearly or bi-yearly basis to, to look down in to see if there's any leaks, leaks in them. I recently found one at Cedar Brook that, um, we're gonna get rehabbed. Um, but, you know, i- it's the lines that we're, we're trying to pinpoint here.
Yeah, I'm, to circle back a- as to how many there are and us not really having a finalized number. Does anyone know the finalized number? Fred or Craig?
When, when you say finalized, do you mean for the township?
Yeah, how many do we have that we need, that we potentially would need to implement, you know, a hatch flow?
Well, the last I looked, we had about a hundred miles of sewer lines in the, uh, sanitary sewer, not stormwater, sanitary sewer lines. Is that approximately correct, Jim?
It's, it sounds like it could be correct. I'm, I don't know that number off the top of my head.
This, this was, in the past, this was done every year. We would take sections of the township and do the I and I work. Um, I mean, we've been budgeting. I didn't wanna say to Jim, cause I'll spend my money, but sixty thousand dollars a year for as long as I can, as I know. Um, and having this done every year and it, I guess it has slipped or I, I'm not sure what the problem was. Um, but it hasn't been done in a couple of years. So.
Craig, you're right, and we should continue doing this.
And to, to be honest, the, um, recommendation to purchase one flow meter is, is to get the process moving and to, we can do this study area with one flow meter. If we take a look at the additional areas that we wanna do and even though some have slipped through the crack, maybe, uh, a year or two slipped through the cracks, like we could catch up by doing a more comprehensive study next year, potentially.
Uh, I have a question for Craig. Craig, um, can we get records from the previous engineering company as for, uh, where, where they did, um, the, uh, the TV inspections, uh, so that Jim has a history of those that were done recent and those were, that were done ten years ago?
Yeah, we'll, we'll put a, we'll put a plan together and I'll, I'll reach out to CKS on that and, uh, see what we can.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful to Jim to see, uh, where they were and when. So he can then map a plan, an overall plan for years to come. Just a comment.
Yep.
Thank you.
Certainly do that.
And, and, and for those people in the audience who don't know, um, I and I is very important. Because if we get the rainwater, um, non, non-sanitary sewer water into those sewer pipes, the cost goes up at the wastewater treatment plant to treat water. the cost goes up at the wastewater treatment plant to treat water that shouldn't be treated. Just so everybody understands that. So it's very important to have a I N I program and in a very tight system, because you don't, you don't want to incur those costs. And they don't go down over time. So it's very important to find where you may have any degradation of the system and then, and then get it addressed. So, are there any more questions from members of the board and supervisors? Okay, are there any questions from members of the audience?
Sorry. No, I think we lost a lot of people. I only have one page now. Nobody, no, no questions.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, next up is authorization to advertise and ordinance to incorporate our hiring procedures for our police department into Act fifty-seven. Neil, could you explain this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a number of moving pieces here, so I'll try to move through it with some alacrity. And I know that Chief Kenny's with us in case I get something wrong. And Danielle is really the inspiration for this, so I'd like to thank her before I get started. But there are hiring procedures currently in the Lower Glendale Township Code and internally within the department that include a background check. And this discussion is very timely since jury selection started today in the Derek Chauvin case charged with second degree murder and the death of George Floyd. In response to that, the Pennsylvania Legislature passed Act fifty-seven, which was signed by the governor last July. And the underlying purpose for Act fifty-seven is to prevent an officer with a, let's say, checkered past from simply moving from one department to another without adequate disclosure of disciplinary action, criminal complaints, complaints by residents, anything of that nature. Because officers could do that, simply leave a department and seek employment with another department. And there was no way for the hiring department to really get an idea of what that officer's background is until we came to Act fifty-seven, which requires that all departments maintain separation records for all their officers that contain a very robust description of that officer's background. And it requires that that information be made available to any other department that may be interviewing that officer for potential employment. And likewise, it requires that that department that may be hiring that officer to do a very thorough background check. And these separation records will now be maintained in a repository at the state level as well. And so when a department interviews a prospective officer, there will be an opportunity to get this background information and hopefully make a better hiring decision than otherwise might occur. Now, this doesn't say that the department could not hire someone who has a checkered past, and I'll go into what that means in a moment. It simply means that if the department is going to hire a person like that, it needs to create a record, a written record justifying why that hiring decision is made. And that applies to some specific discreet acts that may be in that officer's background. For example, excessive force, theft, sexual misconduct. There's a list of ten items. And if you're going to hire an officer who has one or more of those ten items in his or her background, you're going to need to justify that decision in a written record that will be made available to the public through a right to know request. Now, one of the items that Danielle suggested should be added to that list. And unfortunately, it's not in the state statute, but we're going to add it to the Lower Glendale Code is planning and or participating in one or more acts of insurrection or obstruction to the laws of the United States, any individual state or territory, or any political subdivision thereof. So the crux of that was taken from the Federal Insurrection Act. I added political subdivision to make it clear that if you're engaged in an act of insurrection or obstruction, even at the local level, that should go into a separation record that's made available to a potential hiring department. So what we've done is through an ordinance, we propose to take Act fifty-seven, improve upon it, enhance it, and then add it to the Lower Glendale Township Code so that there can be no question but that any hiring decision that's made is made in accordance with Act fifty-seven.
Thank you, Neil. Chief, I, I've spoken with you. I know you've been involved in this conversation. Do you have any comments you'd like to make or concerns you'd like to raise?
And unlike Neil, I'm not sure what word he used, but I'm just going to be quick. Alacrity, that word. We, I have no issue with this at all. I watched a PowerPoint presentation on this about a week ago. Divid has a class, a virtual class they're going to hold in April. It should be noted that the repository is M O P A C. M O P A C is the Municipal Police Officers Training Commission. They are the state police that certify police officers. That's how we get our certification. That's, they make sure we're going through fifty hours of updates each year. They can pull our certification. You're no longer a police officer. So they have the teeth, the power in this act. It is not going to take effect till July fifteenth, is when they hope to have this system up and running. And there is no grandfathering requiring municipalities, state police, to submit prior to that date. And the other thing that I just want to make sure that everybody's clear with, we're talking about hiring other, when you're, this is when you're hiring other police officers. So if you hire, you know, the last two hires we had, they were not active police officers anywhere. So there would not be this database held by M O P A C, because they weren't current police officers. It requires us to submit forms. It requires cops who try and get a job elsewhere. It requires our municipality to get the information. So it's a good thing. In short, it's a good act. I have no issue with it at all.
Thank you, Chief. Supervisors, do you, is there anyone that has any comments?
Just wanted to add that this was unanimously, unanimously supported by the Prosecutors Association, the Internal Order of Police, the Chiefs of Police Association, and it essentially is just us establishing best practices.
Yep. And I think as Neil noted, we have a lot of this outside of this, you know, we could not create this database. We do a lot of this with our background that we currently do with, with checking. We do a thorough background check. This just adds one more layer, which is a good thing.
Okay, I also like to thank Neil and Chief Kenny and Danielle for all your hard work on this. I think it's a, it's a good addition to the municipal code. Are there any comments from members of the audience?
Not seeing anything, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to have a motion then.
Don't move.
Have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yep. Next up, public comments. Are there any comments from the public on any issues that we haven't already raised tonight?
Mr. Schaefer has a hand up.
Thank you. This is just something, I don't want to delay the meeting any longer than necessary either with, so I'll speak with alacrity as well. Two meetings ago, there was a discussion of the contract being let to do some roadwork around the township. And at the time, I was trying to follow which roads they were and track them down. And just one struck me. One of them is Rotell Drive. It said paving and widening to the end. And because that road, and when I checked on it later, basically there are no residents on there. It just goes to the front entrance of a private school. I just wondered how far the township was going to be widening and paving, because I just didn't know where the end was construed to be. Is it at the entrance to schools, all the way to their turnaround? I, I just wondered whether that was township money being spent to improve the access to a private facility that, a private school, basically. So I just wondered what the definition of the end of John Rotell Drive, we don't need to answer that tonight.
I can, I can, Mark, I can, I can answer you pretty quickly. Okay. So the township owns John Rotelli Drive from the Bethel Pike driveway, essentially to where the turn into the school happens. So it's a really small portion and hasn't been paved in a very long time. The widening is really associated with potentially from the driveway to the, there's like a little, there's a building there. I think it's a Verizon store, maybe?
Verizon stores.
And Rich's other places on the other side.
Yeah, okay. So the widening would be on the Verizon store side from essentially their driveway back, and it would just be a few feet. What ends up happening, my understanding is that parents and buses stack there and they get very close to the edge and the edge of the road breaks away. So we would be widening maybe three feet to provide a little bit more space there. And it would also protect the roadway, so we wouldn't have to repave it as often.
Thank you very much. I just didn't know where the definition of the end was, and I appreciate the clarification. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Mr. Schaefer, I had Mr. Hirsch and Fred Zollers out there before that last meeting, trying to explain to me what the end of the road was too, so. I'm glad you're with me.
I'm in good company then, Craig. Thank you.
End of the road here tonight, Mark.
Well said, sir.
Are there any more questions from the public?
I'm not seeing anything.
Okay, manager's report, great.
I just want to thank everyone. It's a long night. We got a lot done. And I have nothing else to say, but thank you for hanging in there and getting a lot accomplished tonight.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Supervisors' comments?
I'd like to thank everybody for hanging in there. We covered a lot tonight. There were some things on the agenda that must have appeared after I printed it out on Friday, the last two in particular, but that's all right, that they were very important. But I want to give a heads up to Craig and also Neil that I'll touch base with either one of you or both of you in reference to an update on where the township is at this time on the, the private residence that's on the Little League property that we purchased. I, I think, I'm trying to think of the name of the old property.
McCormick property.
McCormick, yes. So I don't need an explanation now. I'll touch base with Craig and or Neil later in the week, but thank you. We, we covered a lot.
Okay, Kath?
Yes, we did. We made up for lost time two weeks ago. Thanks for all your hard work, staff, and see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Tessie?
I, I don't have anything else to add. Just thanks to the supervisors for a very productive evening.
Thank you. Danielle? You're on mute.
I wanted to thank everybody for participating in our communication survey who did participate. I also wanted to thank everybody who submitted an application to volunteer for the Park and Rec Board. You should be hearing from someone from the township shortly. Tessie and I are looking to start those interviews very shortly. And I appreciate your patience as we worked through them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for hanging in. This meeting is adjourned.
Mark, sorry. I see somebody does have their hand up. It just went up right now. I don't know if you want to call on them, but it's William Murray.
Sure. William, you're on mute. Is somebody on mute, William?
I sent a message asking to unmute, but nothing's happening.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, William.
Okay, I'm a resident of four thirteen Brookside Avenue, and I walk Pen Ambler Park daily. And I had sent a petition signed by twenty-seven people from the neighborhood and community why the the park has not been accessible and plowed so that people can use the park. When I, when I did attempt to walk the park, I see footprints in the snow and ice. But so that, so that shows that the park has been, has been used, but I just want to ask why it's been shut down for five weeks. And if the pandemic has taught us anything, it's that it's necessary to adapt to your circumstances. People have to get out and about with this pandemic. You can't go to the mall and go for a walk. You can't walk your dog in a mall. I had one gentleman on the basketball court this Sunday when I was, when he signed the petition, he lives across the street at seventy, seven twenty-five Pen Ambler Road. And he said, I'd be glad to shovel the, the paved, half mile paved walkway with you. But, but have we gotten to that point where we have to do the work? I expect the township to serve the community, and I think that's the expectation that is, was shared by the twenty-seven people who signed the petition. Is it possible to show that petition that I emailed to Tessie to show the?
William, we, we've, we've received your petition. We're looking into it. But, but one of the things you may not realize is we have thirty miles of, of trails, at least thirty miles of trails.
Are they paved trails, sir, or are they dirt trails? If, if, if the park was, was a dirt trail, I would have no issue. But the fact that it's paved and they can.
Nation of, William, it's a combination of both. And, and just because something is paved or not paved, well, let me back up a little bit. Usually we have signs out there during the winter months. And the, I'm not sure exactly why the signs didn't go out this year, and I don't recall the exact wording. But basically, it's, it's to the effect that the parks pass are closed during the winter.
I've, I've walked the other path and it's been plowed in the wintertime. I've been a resident here for thirty-seven years. And that park's been open for the last twelve to fifteen years, and it's been plowed by the township.
Mr. Murray, if I can interrupt, that trail has never been plowed by the township.
Well, we, I disagree, but I, you know, we have to move forward and look into the future. And like I said, the pandemic has taught us that we need to adapt to our circumstances. And to have the park shut down for five weeks is unacceptable. It's something that is, is utilized by the people over there in Georgetown who walk their dogs and people in the community who walk.
Well, we, we're, we're, we're in conversations, William, with the members of the township. We've received your petition and we're considering what the options are and we'll be in touch.
Okay, so you'll notify me or how is this going to proceed? Do I have to attend to another supervisor's meeting or the Park and Rec?
No, we can, we, we can get you. Since you circulated the petition, at least that's my understanding, and we can get a response back to you.
Okay, I would appreciate, you know, the. Okay, I would appreciate, uh, you know, that you look into the requests and for the sake of the community, especially with this pandemic, that steps be taken.
Well, we're, we're definitely looking into it. And but that's about all I can tell you right now.
Okay, I appreciate your, your time and and effort.
Okay, you're welcome, William.
Thank you, William, for your public advocacy. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, um, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.